The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
Under Presentations tonight, we have none. Can I have a motion, please, to adopt the agenda as presented? Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor Sarnik, all in favor. Thank you. We have the minutes of the regular meeting held on September 9th, 2024. A motion to adopt. Thank you, Counselor Ford, seconded by Counselor Veroba, all in favor. Thank you. Under original communications, delegations, and petitions, tonight we're joined by the concerned citizens, represented by Milton Vickery and Miles Victor, with questions regarding the downtown revitalization and DEI initiative. Thank you for coming tonight. I'll open the floor to you.
Thank you. So in regards to the Estevan Downtown Revitalization, or EDR, I wish to make some brief statements to bring context to our questions tonight. A note to the public, we were requested to submit our questions in advance. Last time we were before council was April 8th of 2024. In our presentation, we reported facts we had learned about the EDR project. Advised council, we had collected a petition and asked one question. Will council respect the voice of the ratepayers and hold a referendum per the request of this petition, or will you seek legal maneuvers to undermine it? The petition was filed the next day with 1,491 signatures representing about 25% of the eligible voters. According to the city's act, the petition was to be evaluated for sufficiency within 30 days. Council waited for two weeks at April 2024 meeting to authorize the clerk to begin the daunting process. We interpreted that to mean that the council was intending to disregard the will of the voters and dismiss the petition. Exactly that happened on May the 8th, when the clerk report was read and the petition had been deemed insufficient. We note that at this meeting, the mayor gave opportunity for all council to comment prior to accepting the clerk's report. Not one member expressed any concern for the will of the voters at that time. We would like the public to know that we filed a court action to defend the taxpayer's petition, which was heard on June the 25th of 2024. During the court proceedings, council for the city referred to the approximate 25% of the voters represented by the petition as a small vindictive group and requested approximately 4,000 in legal fees paid by the taxpayer be awarded to the city. In the sufficiency report, 273 signatures, well within the margin for sufficiency, were discarded for illegible dates. The judge in his decision decided with our application in item 20 stating, "In relation to the sufficiency of the petition with respect to the dates of various signatures, I conclude that there were certain strict practices applied by the city clerk which do not meet the test of identifying the correct..." Sorry. "Applied by the city clerk which do not meet the test of reasonableness and ought not to have been applied. The exclusion of certain signatures due to an insufficiency of identifying the correct date cannot be accepted in some instances." In the end, the judge concluded the issue moot and dismissed the case citing in item 32, "I will not refer the petition back to the administrator to count those where the month, day, space entry exceeds 12 in order to come to a conclusion as to whether the petition is sufficient based on total signatures counted. That would be an exercise that does not respect the use of public resources given the stage at which the project is at. The project was well underway at the time of the argument and may in fact be nearing completion. The purpose to be served by such a referral is therefore not justified." And regarding the city's request for cost reimbursement in item 33, the judge stated, "Given the conclusion that some entries were excluded ought to have been included, there will be no award to costs." So, to our questions now. Multiple reassurances were given by council to stay on a $9.2 million budget at the last meeting we had, as well as an additional memo from March 19th of 2024, which states Phase 1 of the downtown revitalization project, the only phase approved, will make use of the provided $7.75 million plus the city's investment of $1.5 million, which comes to $9.2 million. So our questions, our questions from that then are, what is the cost of the project to date? What is the planned cost for the fiscal year-end of 2024? And what, if any, is the cost to complete the project in the future, meaning fiscal 2025 or beyond? As in the city's published FAQ timelines that they have up on the website, they indicate that there'll be site furniture in 2025 not in the contract, light poles in 2025, top lift asphalt in 2025, and line painting in 2012 not in contract, which is striking because all those items obviously would form part of the original Phase 1 project. But now we're being, looks like that they're being timed, that they're going to be completed in 2025. And as for the public to be aware, all the federal funding, the grant of the $7.75 million has to be spent by March 31st, I believe, 2024, 2025? Okay, so that's it in regards to the Estevan Downtown Revitalization. With regards to DEI, the second issue that we have raised tonight. DEI, aka also known as, according to the literature I've been reading, is known as anti-racism, is synonymous with anti-racism movement currently in the political spectrum. Documentary filmmaker Matt Walsh in his new film, Am I a Racist?, makes the case that DEI is an industry of race hustlers pushing DEI for profit, political power, and influence. Historian Victor Davis Hansen evaluates DEI initiatives as a neo-Marxist in nature. Instead of dividing citizens by classes in classical Marxism, it does it so by race. February 2024, research paper by the Canadian Aristotle Foundation for Public Policy states that, in their report titled "DEI: What DEI Research Concludes About Diversity Training", it is divisive, counterproductive, and unnecessary. In the report, it states, "DEI initiatives are not supported by the empirical evidence. DEI does have an impact, but it's not positive. DEI instruction has been shown to increase prejudice and activate bigotry among participants by bringing existing stereotypes to the top of their minds or by implementing new biases they had not previously held." Let's look at DEI's performance in organizations in 2023 billionaire investor and business owner.
Miles, one minute, please. I just want to draw your attention to the time. Each group presenting is allotted 10 minutes, and you are at the seven-minute mark.
I'm almost done.
That will only leave us about two minutes to reply. Is that okay?
I don't believe, I believe that the wording of the bylaw is that I have 10 minutes to give my statements of opposition or such. And you can have all the time in the world as we have in past council meetings to respond however you like to answer the questions. I don't believe the 10 minutes was to include response time by the city council.
There will be no response from you to the time, but please take your remaining three minutes. Thank you.
As you like, but I reclaim the time that I've lost in your interruption. So the DEI's performance in organizations so far, Bill Ackman, billionaire business owner and investor, posted a 4,000-word opus on social X, Media X, that criticized DEI as inherently a racist and illegal movement in its implementation, even if it purports to work on behalf of the so-called oppressed. Ackman's lengthy statement was later reposted by Elon Musk, mastermind of Tesla and SpaceX, who stated, "DEI is just another word for racism. Shame on anyone who uses it." In a follow-up post, Musk doubled down, adding, "DEI is, because it discriminates on the basis of race, gender, and many other factors, is not merely immoral, it's also illegal." In 2023 Leaders.com reported Warren Buffett, billionaire Democrat and CEO of Berkshire Hathaway scoffs at many of the core orthodoxies of modern business, leaving ESG policies and DEI concerns off the table. Six diversity climate proposals are on the table this year, and Buffett asked that his shareholders devote against all of them. News articles, Toronto Sun from July 18th of this year, "Microsoft Seen Among Companies Scaling Back DEI Initiatives." September 6th in the Globe and Mail, "Molson Coors Ends Diversity Equity and Inclusion Policies Moves to Broader View." From NBC News, "Currently in the USA, more than 30 states have introduced bills banning or limiting DEI initiatives during their current legislative session." So the questions we have for council are, what are the costs for this implementation of DEI passed by city council on August 19th of 2024? Estimated payroll costs of managers to take the training, costs of the course, and the total cost of the program. Thank you.
I would like to start with the questions regarding diversity, equity, and inclusion, and then I will turn the floor over to the city manager to discuss an update regarding the downtown revitalization. What we won't discuss tonight is the outcome of the judge's ruling, as that has been decided and is not part of council's decision. It was the decision of the judge. The diversity, equity, and inclusion program that was adopted in August of this year does not reflect some of the concerns that the articles you've mentioned have. It does not impact our hiring policy. We have not changed internal documents to reference a preference for certain demographics over others. The first step that the city took was to ask about inclusion. So when we do a project, when we bring a policy forward, we are asking that three questions be evaluated. They include, who does this policy include? Who does this policy exclude? And how can we bridge the gap? That is all that this current council term has agreed to, and that is all that has changed from an internal city operations perspective. With regards to the cost of the program, it is not a program that was purchased. The Alberta Urban Municipalities Association undertook a project to create additional resources for municipalities. So when I reviewed information available all across Canada, there were certainly wide variations in what the terms diversity, equity, and inclusion could mean, and I didn't feel that the programs in Ottawa or Halifax really reflected our lived experience here in Estevan, but that Alberta more closely reflected what we were looking for. And that was a way to set a baseline, to assess where the community is, both as council, as a city hall, and also the groups within the community, and then would allow to reassess years from now and see if there's been progress made. It is a free tool available on the Alberta Urban Municipalities website, so there was no cost in purchasing or using this program. It's all publicly available if anyone's interested in looking for additional information. And not only does it give an assessment tool, but it also lists within the tool ideas for how this could be implemented by individuals, businesses, community groups, or council in the future. None of those decisions were made at this time. The commitment of this council was to pay for the time for our managers to take the assessment tool. So you'll see later on the agenda tonight, the results from that tool are available, but the cost for the manager's time was about $600. And that is the total cost with the program. With that, I will turn it over to the city manager to review the downtown revitalization update.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. We do have a full report from Associate Engineering that will be going up on the website tomorrow. Just some highlights that they mentioned is kind of an overview that was presented a couple council meetings ago. The initial estimates from the initial design phase were about $8.3 million. Once initial design engineering was completed, it was determined that the project would be around $9.8 million. At this point, a revision to the existing Prairies County grant was, we asked for an increase, and increased funding was provided. So in total, there was $8.5 million from the Prairies County grant, with the obligation of $1.5 million from the city to complete this project at $10 million. And as you mentioned, they did include the engineering costs as part of that. As we've moved through the project, there was a 60th design phase set up for tender, which was awarded ASL for $7.8 million, with the expectation that site furnishings and electrical that still had to be finalized would be about $2.2 million. As those tenders came in, they were at $4.2 million, so they were over budget. At that point, there was a discussion with council to reduce the scope of the project to be fiscally responsible, and $1.3 million of removals were put into place and pushed to a time that they could be putting into the fore. There some were totally removed, such as banner lighting and a streetlight at 12th Avenue. Some were pushed to future council, so that would be benches, garbage cans, and things like that nature that could be added as there was funds available. So the construction costs, that brought the projects down to $10.7 million. A couple councils ago, city council approved an increase to borrow $500,000 additional this year to put towards that, with the excess costs being covered from city's cash reserves from year end. It is noted that $750,000 of the engineering that you had mentioned was not covered with this, and that it was a recommendation by council to look at applying for the Canadian Community Builds Fund in the 2025 years to cover that amount. It's pretty much equal to that amount, $700,000 to $750,000. And that is a fund that is allocated based on population base from the federal government. With that, in regards to the timelines, so those items that you mentioned about light posts and even some of the paving stones, if they're not finished, are actually part of the tender requirements. Those aren't additional costs. So we have worked with Prairies County that all funds to the contractors will be submitted and paid by March 31st, and that the city's contribution of $1.5 million could be applied to that project after the fact for any additional costs. So this report will be up on the website tomorrow, so please review it. And if there's any other further questions, please let me know.
We will have. You mentioned a lot of numbers and the, that don't directly, well, they do apply to the questions that I've asked, but it's kind of hard to do the math on the fly because you mentioned a lot of numbers, so I will follow up with your questions on that. Thanks.
Thank you, Miles and Milton, for coming in tonight. With that, we will proceed to the St. Joseph's Hospital Foundation, request for reduction for Festival of Trees. It says, "Dear City Council, we are busy planning our 12th Annual Festival of Trees. Affinity Place is beautiful, and it brings a level of class and elegance to an event which no other facility within Estevan can, and we would love to continue to hold our biggest fundraiser there. It has become highly anticipated and continuously proves to be a hugely successful night of money raised in support of our hospital. So of course, keeping our costs as low as possible helps immensely. The St. Joseph's Hospital Foundation, like many other charities in Estevan, raise funds to ensure our community is a strong, viable, and has fantastic healthcare offered right here at home. We realize that it is very costly to run an event, and there are many things to consider. However, as a charity organization trying to raise money, we would once again ask to pay a discounted rate of $3,750 for the attached rental quote provided by Erin Wilson. We would also like to ask to have use of the fantastic score clock in its entirety for us to play video on the evening of Saturday, November 16th at the gala. Thank you for considering my request. I look forward to the opportunity to discuss this further and hope to receive a positive response soon. Thank you so much for your time and consideration. Lori Jarvis, Executive Director, St. Joseph's Hospital Foundation." What is the wish of council on this request? Counselor Veroba?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I think we would honor this request and give them the discounted rate of $3,750 we have in the past, and I think it does cover the cost, actually, the physical cost that the city would have. So yeah, we've done it in the past. I think we can go ahead with it.
You'll make that motion, Counselor Veroba. Counselor Clark?
Thank you. I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor? Approved. Can we see Counselor Frank? Counselor Frank has joined us virtually tonight, just waiting to see his vote on the Festival of Trees. Thank you. That's an all in favor. Our next item on the agenda is also from St. Joseph's Hospital Foundation regarding the Festival of Trees table request. "We are thrilled to invite you to the 12th Annual Festival of Trees Gala, Red Carpet Christmas, hosted by St. Joseph's Hospital Foundation. Mark your calendar for Saturday, November 16th, 2024, and get ready for an unforgettable evening filled with holiday cheer and festive spirit. This year's event promises an exciting atmosphere with happy hour raffles, raffles, live and silent auctions, an elegant and delicious meal, and of course, our signature display of beautiful Christmas trees. Guests will jingle and mingle while enjoying specialty cocktails, exploring a fantastic array of silent auction items, and purchasing raffle and 50/50 tickets. We are delighted to announce our entertainment lineup includes a fabulous blend of black tie bingo and music by the talented Carlyle local, Tegan Little Chief. As a valued supporter who purchased a table last year, you are receiving this exclusive VIP invitation to reserve your table before made available to the general public. Given the high demand for this event, we anticipate another sellout. Therefore, we are offering you the opportunity to secure a table of eight seats at a cost of $1,200. Warm regards, Lori Jarvey." What is the wish of council? Counselor Clark?
I'll make the motion that we purchase the table.
Do we have, Counselor Ford, seconds? All in favor? The GFL report for August 2024 is in front of you. Do we have a motion to accept and approve? Counselor Sarnik, Counselor Clark, oh, Counselor Veroba, all in favor? Thank Next, we have the Southeast Transportation Planning Committee, meeting minutes of August 27th, 2024. Counselor Clark, would you like to speak to these?
Certainly. Thanks, Counselor Leeser. We are working on making it talk a top five economic areas, highways that service various areas within our district. So we look at different highways and their needs and what they do for economic impact in that, and that's what we're putting together and working on, and we'll be finalizing at our next meeting. So I will make the motion to accept that.
Thank you. A second, or Counselor Ford, all in favor? Counselor Frank? Thank you. Counselor Frank is hard at work tonight while also virtually participating, so he'll notice us waving to the screen behind the camera quite often.
My apologies. I had a printing press go down at about 1 o'clock today, and I have a deadline of tomorrow, so I will be here until I'm done.
We appreciate your participation. Next on the agenda, we have the DEI Measuring Inclusion Tool. I can speak to this, city manager?
Sure. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. As noted in the initial comments, this was a recommendation coming from council to do an assessment using the Alberta Municipalities Tool. The results have been summarized in the report, and I will let you speak to it.
Thank you. We are not expecting an action on this report tonight. Just thought it was important to bring the results to the community, so the community could also see how council and administration currently views diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives within our community, but that not only could future council take action on these findings, but also community groups could get a gauge on maybe where there's the potential for improvement, some opportunities for them to bring new ideas forward. So if I can have a motion to accept the results as presented. Counselor Ford, seconded by Counselor Veroba. To you, Counselor Veroba.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So these results are basically everyone to date that has taken, because I just was curious if anyone else on council had actually taken the survey?
Thank you, Counselor Veroba. At this time, I am the only counselor that has submitted my report.
Okay, so I did try, and on Friday night, one hour in, page 47, I believe 60-some pages, it stalled out on me, and all my results were gone. So I just wanted to say that I didn't realize that, like, we had that deadline, but I am, my apologies for that. But I did take it, and my results, I think, to the date of where I got to were similar to what is in here. Is there value in still continuing then, or just wait and to see who's on the next council and do it at that time?
In my opinion, Counselor Veroba, there's always value in completing it. Gives us a more broad review of where we are and where perhaps the next council hopes to get to.
I will attempt to do that this week.
I did find it very interesting, just perusing the results personally. There are themes that everyone that took the review were very consistent on, and there were also topics that some felt there wasn't any information, and some felt that we had already achieved the goal of a culture of inclusion. So a lot of opportunities for anybody interested in digging into this file in the future. I think we have a motion and a second, or we just need to vote all in favor. Thank you, Counselor Frank. Thank you. Next on the agenda tonight, we'll invite Richard from Land Development. He is bringing two proposals forward tonight. Richard, if you would like to start with the Development Permit 067, 2024, a daycare at 1505 Wellack Road, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor and council, for the time to come here today. This is a follow-up from the last council meeting. We started processing the development permit, application for the daycare at Wellack Road on the western lots near the hospital. Referral was made. I did not receive a single phone call, email, letter, or anything on it. And I'm recommending approval in accordance with the terms of the sale agreement that council put in place last council meeting, and includes a number of recommendations, such as maintaining daycare licenses with the province, business license with the city. There's a utility issue that needs to be dealt with, which is common to any time you put in a new building. I can respond to that in more detail if anyone has any questions. Landscaping plan, real property report, that's all stuff that we do normally. So if there are any questions from council, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Richard. I'll give a quick background on the proposal. The community, I think, has heard rumblings, but the proposal is to develop a licensed daycare on three properties that will house up to 90 clients. As a discretionary use notification was delivered through the mail to neighboring landowners. So 1505 Wellack Road is three lots adjacent to the hospital that they're looking at developing, and there was no responses in favor or against received by Land Development. Council, I can open the floor for comments or motion. Clark?
Counselor Leeser, I just was wondering, on the two choices of whether we disconnect three of the services, or one, are we, do we need that answered first of all, or to tie it into the other one, or is that something that will be, I guess, further on as it gets closer to happening?
Richard, are you comfortable speaking to that?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, there's three lots involved in this currently. They're going to be combined into one lot. Each of the existing lots has its own separate connection to a water and sewer line off of the central, and those mains are in the center line of Wellack Road. So there's really two choices here. One is to connect one set and then dig up Wellack Road in two locations to cut them off at the mains. And the other choice, and this is something I reviewed with city engineering as well as water and wastewater services, and the recommendation will be, and they'll have to get a permit from city engineering to do this work, of course, but it's to tie all three services on the property into one, and that way we don't have to dig up Wellack Road at all. The lines there are very new, I would say, and they would have a long lifespan ahead of them, so we try not to do any more costly roadwork in that area.
Thank you. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I guess just a little follow-up. I hate to tie them to one or the other, but I mean, if they, once the cost gets into doing that, I would like to leave it to the next council to decide, or if it needs to be done sooner, then we can make that decision now.
Yeah, currently in Richard's recommendations, Part D, it includes a utility servicing plan to include the tying together of the three water and sanitary services into a single active service. That is what they're requesting tonight. Ford, and then Counselor Veroba.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. My question actually was about D as well. I would be more than happy to not have to dig into Wellack Road if that's what's recommended. Just that it just seems more cost-effective. We all know how important daycares are in this community and how desperately, we need them really bad. It's just no secret there. So I really like this recommendation, and I really like the proposal, so I will go ahead with making a motion to accept all these recommendations.
Thank you, Counselor Ford. Thank you, Counselor Ford. Counselor Veroba?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I agree with Counselor Ford. I would go ahead and second the recommendation, the motion, to be that we approve the proposed licensed daycare subject to the conditions provided by Land Development Services, which is listed between A and I. I believe that's all, yeah. And I think that the sooner this council moves on this recommendation, the sooner we get those 90s paces, which are definitely in need in our communities. So, I will second that.
Thank you. Before I call for the vote, I'll read those recommendations, just for clarity. Recommendations that council approve the proposed daycare subject to the requirements of the sale agreement, standard conditions, and the following. A, operator to maintain a valid license for service through the province of Saskatchewan. B, operator to maintain a valid business license through the city of Estevan. C, site is subject to the standard conditions pursuant to the zoning bylaw 2022-2061. D, a utility servicing plan to include the tying together of the three water and sanitary services into a single active service. E, developer to provide a landscaping plan for the green space area on the property. F, developer to provide a real property report prior to occupancy. G, developer to provide a grading plan prior to occupancy. H, the three properties be combined into a single parcel. And I, exterior finishings of the building to be aesthetically compatible with the adjoining buildings and the residential standards on adjoining lots, Hockspain Architectural Guidelines. Do we have consensus? Thank you. Also for you, Richard, the Land Development Daycare at 1888 Wellack Road.
Thank you. 1888 Wellack Road. There's an existing dwelling on that property, and the occupant, the owner, would like to convert the basement to a daycare. This is not a home-based business, because it would be a licensed daycare under the province. Under our bylaw, as soon as you seek a provincial Saskatchewan license for daycare, it's no longer a home-based business. Again, referral is done to the neighborhood. No comments or inquiries of any kind to my office, and so I'm recommending approval of this proposal, subject to our standard conditions and the condition that they maintain their business licensing in place.
Do we have a motion? Counselor Sarnik? Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Clark. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. All in favor? Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have bylaw enforcement reports for June, July, and August of 2024. Can I have a motion to accept the reports as presented? Counselor Ford, seconded by Counselor Sarnik. Any questions or concerns from council? Counselor Ford?
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. Just a friendly reminder, the dreaded S-word is coming soon, snow season. So, bylaw's been doing a really good job all summer of making sure everybody's taking care of their weeds and their businesses and their yards, and really making sure all of those bylaws are enforced. So, please just make sure when the snow starts coming that your sidewalks and all the walking areas in front of your house are cleared off.
Counselor Veroba?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I also just wanted to point out, too, if you look at all of the... Anyone who wonders what bylaw does in the city of Estevan, you will see exactly how busy she really is. There's even been discussion in the past, we have had up to two bylaw officers, and I've had people question if there was a need, and definitely based on just even this report. You can see in the month of July, property inspections in 2023 were 149, property inspections in 2024 were 313. So, I've had a lot of calls this year regarding property inspections. They've definitely been getting done, followed up on, but it's an extremely... Hard job. It's wearing it. It's hard, because you have to continuously follow up on these properties. They get given the 14 days, then they clean them up, and then you have to start the process all over again. It's been something that we've been dealing with for many years. Eventually, hopefully, we'll find a way to streamline this, but it's something that I believe is regulated provincially. And am I correct on that, City Clerk? With the property bylaws that we have, in order to get somebody, we can't just give them notice 14 days and then continuously go in there and clean up that property. We have to start the process all over again, and that isn't something that we, as a municipality or city, can change. So, yeah, I think people just need to continue to try and clean up your areas without having to go to bylaw, and then we can concentrate on the areas that are actually in true need. So, but good job for our bylaw.
All right. We are ready to vote. All in favor? Acceptance and approval. Counselor Frank? Thank you. Under instruction of bylaws tonight, we have none. Public hearings and reports, there are none. Under giving notice, we're happy to welcome the United Way for their proclamation of Estevan Telethon Week, October 9 through 13, 2024. If you would like to make your way to the microphone. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor and council, for inviting us back. It seems like it hasn't been a year since we were doing this, but the time flies. We're very excited to provide our 48th telethon in Estevan, which I think in itself is a huge accomplishment. Obviously, in two years, we'll be celebrating 50, with our second VP, Brittany, doing that. I looked at the annual report from last year, and we, as a community, through the work of our member agencies and our community impact partners, affected 7,500 individuals. So, that's not repeat people, that's specific individuals. On a city of, what, 12,000? So, we know how important the work is we do in our community, and we have one of the most caring and giving communities, and we're happy to continue the work as a board and do the behind-the-scenes stuff so that our member agencies can do the really hard work. And we always appreciate the support we get from city, so that the bylaw officer doesn't give us parking tickets when we're loading and unloading and all that kind of stuff. But we're just happy to be at this point again, and we're happy that you guys do the proclamation for us. And I just wanted to say, on October 16, which is the Wednesday before telethon, Murray Jam is doing our kickoff at 11:30, and there's going to be beef on the bun, so everyone is invited. All of the bid items will be there. So, if you've never been to see the bid items at the hall, Murray Jam has them ahead of time, and you can see the wonderful things people make and donate for the telethon. So, do you have anything, Brittany?
No, you nailed it.
Counselor Ford, thanks, Deputy Mayor. Thank you guys so much for coming. Do you want to tell us what your goal is for the year?
Oh, yeah.
I put you on the spot now.
No, it's good. So, being a really simple thinker, I just went with 348,000, because it's the 48th telethon. We seem to be at a nice, stable amount from year to year. It does fluctuate, but we're at a pretty constant now, and I don't think with today's economic times that we're going to see much change in that over the next few years. So, we're very happy that we can meet some of the needs of the local community impact partners and also the member agencies with the money we do raise on those fun times at the telethon.
Thank you. I will read the proclamation, and then I will ask for a motion that the United Way proclamation be approved, and that we allow the flying of the United Way flag for the week of October 9 to 13, 2024. Proclamation for the United Way Estevan Telethon: Whereas United Way Estevan's mission is to positively impact the quality of life in our community, and whereas United Way Estevan's telethon raises funds for local member agencies and community impact projects to improve lives for all in our community, assigns local volunteers to local projects to make a difference where we live. Be it therefore resolved, I, Kirsten Walezer, Deputy Mayor of the City of Estevan in the province of Saskatchewan, do hereby proclaim the week of October 9 to 13 as United Way Estevan Telethon Week, and urge all citizens of Estevan to recognize and support the goals and objectives of the United Way Estevan. Can I have a motion, please? Counselor Sarnik, seconded by Counselor Frank. Any questions or concerns by council? Counselor Ford?
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. On the previous meeting, September 9, the United Way actually filled out the form for October 13 to 19 to be the actual date of their proclamation and flag raising. And I'm sorry that I just caught this now and didn't correct it when we got...
I was wondering about that myself, just because the telethon is the 18th and 19th.
Would you like me to re-proclaim? We will update the written version. Thank you for bringing that to my attention. Any other concerns? If not, I'll ask the question. All in favor? Thank you. Consensus? Motions? Oh, giving notice. City Manager, if you'd like to talk about Clean Sweep, October 18 to 20?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So, this is a program that we do every spring and every fall to help people clean up some of their areas. I know our staff will identify areas in the city that they can clean up, and there will be a free landfill weekend, as is regularly done. So, please look for any of the information. That will be posted on our social media and our communications, and if you have any questions, please call 634-1800.
Thank you. With that, we'll move to motions from committee. Tonight, there are none. Consideration of bylaws, tonight, there are none. And we'll move to inquiries. Counselor Frank, anything tonight?
Nothing, Deputy Mayor. This is my final meeting, so I was really quite sad when I realized at about 4 o'clock today I was not going to be ready to get there, but just wanted to say that this has been a fantastic eight years serving the community for myself. Best of luck to anybody running for council, and I strongly encourage anybody in the community who has an interest to reach out to us and to run for council. This is all of our community, and I think it's important that at any time, if we can and want to, that we volunteer and help out and help lead our community. So, it's been a great time, and I'm very grateful for the opportunity, and thank you to the citizens who have allowed me to be here.
Thank you. Counselor Ford?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. As everybody can see, most of us are wearing orange shirts this evening, and that's to commemorate September 30, National Day for Truth and Reconciliation. This day acknowledges that residential schools are a part of our history. Wearing an orange shirt is a national movement to recognize the experience of those who went to residential schools, to honor them, and to show a collective commitment to ensure that every child matters. I've been working with our marketing and communications team to provide some appropriate literature on National Day for Truth and Reconciliation. So, we're going to post some of those literature pieces in the coming days before September 30, so please keep an eye on our social media, and she'll also be sharing any community events that'll be happening around that day.
Thank you. Counselor Sarnik?
Thank you. Just kind of reiterate what Counselor Frank said. You know, it's been a quick four years. I wish you all the best in the future, and it's been an honor serving with you on council. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Veroba?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I had a call regarding excessive amounts of cats on the 400 block of Third Street, so bylaw is looking into that. I actually did take the opportunity to drive down the street on two separate occasions, and there was three to four at all times laying on the street. So, I agree, there's an excessive, excessive amount of cats down there, and if they are your cats, you do need to keep them indoors, because they're just like dogs. They need to stay inside. The other thing is, I've had a lot of people this year talking about trees in the back lanes. They definitely need attention, and I know it's getting to the end of the year, but my fear is if we don't handle them before the snow flies, then we're going to have a lot of snow hanging over those back alleys. The other thing I noticed in some of the back lanes in the Seventh Street and the Third Street area was the large amount of water that was sitting there, and I don't know if that's something that is normal for their area, those areas, but again, if we could just maybe take a look at some of the back lanes that have, or if people want to just maybe even let us know if there's an area of concern, especially before we hit the winter and then spring thaw. And then also King Street and Pine Avenue, I noticed this weekend that the lights on Friday were taking a long time to change, not letting people out of the parking lot. And then this morning, I noticed that they were changing on a cycle that was going about every 35 seconds. So, just wanted to let people know that, you know, they are aware of it. The city is fixing it, and the parts are on their way. So, hopefully, before the end of this week, it will be fixed and back to normal. So, anyone getting frustrated with that, please just bear with us.
Thank you. Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Today, I was in Coronac. The government of Saskatchewan provided $10 million to the southeast and Coronac areas for coal transition, money that'll be used to work with new ventures within our community. $5 million of that will come to our community, being fed RM of coalfields and RM of Estevan. So, that was good timing. Hopefully, we can use that and continue with some of the positive work that's been done in this community. Secondly, I too am at my last meeting, and I'm not rerunning, so I just wanted to pass on a few things. First of all, when I first started, I got a call the next day that said, "Why did you do this? You should just give up on this community." I think that was wrong. I'm glad I didn't, and I'm glad the people that are involved in this didn't give up on this community, because I think it's there. And I, when you go into your first meeting and you go, "Boy, there's the budget, and there's the people that need money, and we'll deal with that," and you realize that's about the city, and there's a whole other part about the community, and that community is United Way, St. Joseph's Hospital, you name it. People that come for national events, provincial events, that come to this chamber and just promote this community and do that, and that is the wonderful people that I'm glad that I represented. Thanks to Jeff and all your staff. Thanks to fellow councillors, and thanks for a great time.
Thank you, Counselor Clark. Trudy, anything tonight? City Clerk, anything tonight?
I do want to announce call for nomination starts tomorrow. You can come to our office and drop off your papers, or pick up your papers. Have everything into me by October 9 at 4 o'clock. Election Day is November 13. Please, to the entire community, please come out and vote. Advance poll, mail-in ballots. Polling Day, we're at the Church of God, we're at the drive-thru, at the fire hall, and the drive-thru at the Sud Zone. So, any way we can help, contact elections@estevan.ca, and we will try and help you.
Thank you, City Manager.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Kind of echo some of those comments. Thank you very much for another council term. Thank you for everybody's support. We got a lot done in this term, and I think we've made the community a better place. For anybody not running, best of luck in your retirement. I've heard that a few times. But for those who are running, good luck to get on the next council term. I think there's definitely more that we can do in the city and make it a better place, and appreciate everybody's commitment to the community for anybody that does step up and run for council.
Thank you. And with that, I will ask for a motion to move into committee of the whole. Counselor Ford, seconded by Counselor Frank. All in favor? Carried. And with that, we call this meeting to a close. Good night.